Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgeville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, July 21st, 2025. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Alleg- the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to be together this evening. We ask you once again to provide us with your wisdom so that we may engage in meaningful discussion and ultimately to make the best decisions possible for the betterment of North Ridgeville and its residents. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Abens?
Here.
Winkle?
Excused.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Law Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Clerk or Council? Here. Tonight on the agenda, under the approval of minutes, we have the regular city council meeting minutes dated July 7th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as originally submitted. And please note that council has also received the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes dated June 25th, 2025 as well. Up next is our lobby session. The lobby session is the portion of our meeting in which the public is allowed an opportunity to address council as well as the administration. We do ask anybody who wishes to speak to speak from the podium and from the podium only, please. I will ask you to begin by stating your name and your address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters pertaining to the business of city council or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgeville. In the interest of time, the lobby session is not intended to be an interactive question and answer session, but nonetheless, we do appreciate and welcome your feedback. Depending on the nature of your comments, a member of council may follow up with you. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. I do have two written submissions which we will take first. The first one is Eric Miller. Mr. Miller, if you could, again, please state your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
My name's Eric Miller. My address is 33731 Sicily Court in North Ridgeville. But I'm here again, as I was two weeks ago, to talk about my property at 7106 Fair Acres Road and the sewer tap-in. I'm going to ask my seven elected members of council to please help me as I did two weeks ago. My first request was to fix the where I had to tie in, which wasn't the tap, it was where I was told to tie in at, the directional tee, which is about a bubble off and it's back flowing into my line. Now Cliff had called me and he told me that he was in discussion with the mayor and the foreman for the water department seems to think that it should be okay, that there's three inches of sewage in my line and it's just sitting there that it should be okay. Now, if that is true, if it is truly going to be okay, I asked if my members of coun- council would put that in writing for me, just in case there's a problem down the road, because I think there will be. But I don't have a crystal ball, all right? That's my first request. My second request is to be reimbursed, because I already paid the fee for the interceptor fee of $3,774.60. The sewer line was installed in 1978 by my neighbor, Mr. Timkey. I want to thank the mayor, once again, for waiving the lateral fee that he did, which was $3,200, give or take, and I appreciate what he did. Now, I understand that there was an email, okay, that, I'll just give you a little history here. So originally, Plan Number One from my city's engineer was no fees could be waived because the city installed the line, which wasn't true. Then I went to Plan Number Two, that only the mayor and council can waive the fee, all right? Once the mayor waived his fee, then it was going to come to council and ask to be waived. Then Plan Three was, I was told that the mayor had it wrong, that the interceptor fee cannot be waived unless it was a 12-inch line installed, not an 8-inch line. I gave you all, there's an email you can follow, there's also another letter, a couple letters in there that you can follow along with after I'm finished, stating otherwise. I don't think the mayor was wrong, all right? Now I hear it's Plan Four, that French Creek owns the interceptor, and I don't know when that happened, but if that's true, then I'll stand corrected, because I gave you a letter back in 2004, fees were waived for similar residents that were in this situation, and you can see that it was from the then-law director, Andrew Kreitz.
Mr. Miller, just, excuse me real quick, your three minutes has elapsed.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to give Mr. Miller up to an additional three minutes.
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Abens to allow Mr. Miller up to an additional three minutes to speak this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, if the reimbursement is a problem, despite that I hear there's was a $700,000 grant for roundabouts in the city, I also understand that there's a rollover in excess of millions of dollars in the general fund. I don't want my wonderful city to go belly up over $3,774. I don't want that to happen at all. If that would be the case, then I guess we would have to make other arrangements on that fee, but I don't think that's the case, all right? Again, just a two simple S, all right? If the, if where I was told to tie in, if that is going to be okay, all right? If in the eyes of the foreman of the water department, that's going to be okay, can I get that in writing so that I'm covered? And then number two, again, I'm asking if that fee, well, it wouldn't be waived now because I already paid it, if it would be reimbursed. Again, that line was installed in 1978. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The second written submission is Shelley Kersey. Mrs. Kersey, if you could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and your three minutes will begin.
My name is Shelley Kersey. I live at 37886 Sony Lake Drive in North Ridgeville. Read of an article in Cleveland.com today that the council is going to be hearing of a proposal to increase the income tax on the November ballot. It would be passed of an increase from 1% to 1.75%. It was proposed by the finance director at last Wednesday's finance committee meeting, and now very suddenly, the sky is falling and council is in a crunch to decide. I'd personally like to know why. Anyone here was not on top of this issue long before it reached this point. Why was it not brought to the attention of the public long before last Wednesday? Why are we paying a finance director who, in a direct quote from Cleveland.com, says, "I will be honest, I was alarmed when we plugged in the numbers. We're kicking the can down the road with not addressing the revenue issue." Mr. Corcoran states that we do not have the capacity for long-term costs, we have tremendous needs in this city, we do not have enough money or personnel to meet the needs. Where are the checks and the balances? What the heck has been going on? This person's job is to have his pulse on what is happening in our city, yet the ever-present emergency clauses lead me to believe he is ill-prepared to do his job in a fiscally responsible manner. How many lawsuits have been filed and won by those who are victims of his responsibility, in my opinion? Money that was taken from our city coffers due to the incompetence and lack of forethought, again, just my opinion. We all knew long before this that the city was in trouble. Our safety services are stretched to the breaking point, and one of those members sitting on council waited over 11 minutes for an ambulance for their loved one. 11 minutes can mean the difference between life and death. But hey, let's just build more houses, okay? There were legal solutions that could have stopped the growth, we are a charter city, and changes could have been made to the charter to require larger lot sizes and development- developer impact fees. Again, nothing was done, and I, as a citizen, have to wonder why those were never put in place. You've allowed all these developments in this city, and we did not have the school space to hold the influx of new students. Now we have 66% of our property taxes being paid to the school. We are taxing those on fixed incomes out of their homes, and for what reason? Greed? Power? Lack of forethought? In my opinion, it's all that and more. We continue to build things like coffee shops, car washes, pizza places, but where are the good-paying jobs? The office buildings, the light industry, where are those? I'll tell you where. It's not here. It's Avon, Brook Park, Rocky River, North Olmsted, all cities that surround us. But we never had a chance, because we were too busy putting up new signs, building rooms for new printers, building roundabouts and giving raises to the administration. Per Cleveland.com, Mr. Corcoran has an annual salary of $136,843 plus benefits, which places him in the higher end of the mayoral salary salaries in northeast Ohio region.
Mrs. Kersey, just one moment, please. Your three minutes has elapsed.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to give Ms. Kersey up to an additional three minutes.
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Schaefer to allow Mrs. Kersey up to an additional three minutes to speak this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Kersey, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, Mrs. Kersey, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Freeman was paid $196,669,000 plus benefits, an increase of 6.11% from 23, 2023 to 2024, 70% higher than the average and 86% higher than the median chief's salary in 2024. We have let developers ruin what was once a quaint, peaceful city and turn it into a shambles of what we had. We are now celebrating 50 years of a corn festival, where there is barely any room to grow the crop that we celebrate each and every year. We also need to stop what I believe is the dictatorship that is continuing to run rampant by constantly giving increased power. This must stop, and it must stop with each and every one of you sitting there today. There's an election in November, and it is my hope that each of you sitting there, that are just little puppets with your strings being pulled by the master, will be gone. It is time to take our city back from the power-grabbing clause that have put us in this spot to begin with. It is up to the voters, and I, for one, will be campaigning for change, and I hope there are some of you that will not be there come January. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kersey, for being here and sharing your thoughts. Do we have anybody else in the audience this evening who wishes to address council or the administration?
I...
Sir? If you could, again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Bernard Garcia. I live at 7324 Root Road. I'm here voicing my concerns tonight about the dangerous and irresponsible concept of placing a roundabout at Root and Bainbridge Roads. I'm a homeowner in that area, and this roundabout has the potential to take all or part of my property and my home for this concept. This will make my home worthless if I choose to sell, and if I stay, my home value will plummet. The city will try to lowball anyone they can via eminent domain. Unfortunately, my neighbors may face the same issues in fate themselves. As a business owner and looking to invest in the city and in Lorraine County, this will hurt my business, my ability to operate, and will cause financial issues. This roundabout will just push traffic to other intersections and not properly meter the flow of vehicles correctly. The city has already paid more than $865,000 to people who have been wrongly affected by roundabouts in the city over the past few years. This creates a dangerous issue with pedestrians, the elderly, children, children, and disabled people. There's a lot of foot traffic between the various schools, the park, the library, and senior center. Any accident involving any of these groups in that area would most likely be fatal. The city, on purpose, quietly voted on this concept in February 2025. In my opinion, the city did try to hide the concept, knowing that it would be pushed back with opposition from various people within the community. They didn't want the people to know. I'm concerned that the current leadership of this city is more concerned about pushing through their own agendas and working for their own interests and wallets and not for the people who elected them. Our leadership has become a rubber stamp for endless housing developments. I feel that our mayor at times cares more about fulfilling his past employer's wishes than his current constituents. While I am a registered Democrat, I feel that the lack of transparency, clear vision, and leadership with a backbone should concern all voters. We need to focus on what all of our citizens need and want, Democrat, Republicans, and others as well, in this city and not just the home builders. Lastly, I have some other quick, brief points of note that need to be mentioned. I was a little disgusted that the city would not take comments at the Gateway-North Ridgeville meeting. I feel that was by design. I have some concerns about that project, and I think it could be done better, and I think it's definitely awful as it is. I have a Class A CDL with all my endorsements, so please take my input strongly. Woolport, the engineering firm, quietly stated that the concept drawings would need to be larger to accommodate trucks, and those were not to scale that were shown at the meeting. You're now creating a deadly and dangerous situation where semis, double trailers, oversized loads are forced to use Lorraine Road and cannot turn or maneuver properly as that roundabout was designed and that project is as planned. The city in Woolport failed to mention that ODOT, the Ohio Highway Patrol, and Pilot Car Services routinely use Lorraine Road as a major truck and oversized load route due to the partial interchange with a turnpike in 480. Last point of note briefly that I would like to mention is that in Lorraine County, we have nine cities, seven villages, and 18 townships. Only one required its citizens to pay to play for fireworks to celebrate our nation's Independence Day, which is supposed to represent freedom from tyranny and from our city as a whole. As a city, we can do better. Let's work towards moving this event somewhere where the entire community can enjoy it, and we're no longer getting laughed at by Avon and Westlake for paying for fireworks. Thank you. God bless America and North Ridgeville as well.
Thank you, sir, for being here and for sharing your thoughts as well. Do we have anybody else in the audience this evening who would like to address council or the administration? Sir? Just a reminder to please state your name and address for the record.
My name's William Eckler, 36485 Schaefer Drive, Ridgeville. The question I have is, I had my water meters installed today, I own two homes. I had the water meters installed, according to the person that installed it, who's been doing this for quite a while. North Ridgeville is the only town, city, I'm sorry, that is charging the people. Why am I getting charged 350 on my water bill when nobody, no other community, according to this gentleman, and the gentleman that was putting the notices on the houses that haven't responded yet? I'm just wondering why we're getting charged and nobody else is. And the other question is, what's all the dirt being piled up where the old middle school was? That's it.
Mr. Eckler, thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience this evening who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, the lobby session is now closed. We will move on to reports from the administration. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several items on the agenda this evening that'll ask for the emergency clause, mainly on the financial end of things. We are doing our water meter replacement project, which has come up. That account numbers, if you have them, starting with 0101 through 104, and 0106, are encouraged to make their appointment with UMS to have your new meter installed at your earliest convenience. Our Public Works Department Street Division will be paving Spruce Street and Fortune Court this week, and the schedule is always subject to change depending on weather conditions. Our last summer concert series at South Central Park Azibo is scheduled for this Sunday, July 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be the Sounds of Funkology, which has been a popular band in the past. There'll be food trucks, and bring your own lawn chairs, blankets, and friends to enjoy a summer concert under the stars. Concerts are free. This past week, we had a finance committee meeting. I encourage everybody to go online and watch that video about the finance committee and the proposed income tax increase that will be coming up at the next council meeting for a vote. And at this point, Mr. President, I make the motion to appoint Cheryl Farver to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Cheryl was the Director of Human Resources in the city of North Olmsted from 2002 to 2016. She has been an advisor to the Civil Service Commission while she was performing that role as well, and Cheryl would make a great addition. If you hadn't heard, the, one of our members had moved out of the city, so he resigned his position on the civil service when he made that move, and so this position is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Jacobs to appoint Cheryl Farver to the Civil Service Commission. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the appointment passes six to nothing.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The list of streets to be addressed by the full-depth concrete replacement project has been finalized. Sections of the following streets will be included in the work: Oak Street, Glenwood Court, Gatestone Road, Browning Drive, Debbie Drive, Firecrisp Circle, Main Avenue, Harris Drive, Beam Road, and some repair work at the State Route 83 and Mills Road Roundabout. Our kickoff meeting with the awarded contractor, set in stone, is scheduled for tomorrow, and additional project details will be provided in August's newsletter. Although some cracked ceiling has already been provided by our Public Works Department, engineering annually bids out additional cracked ceiling that is mostly targeted for our main thrufares. Our focus this year will be on Center Ridge Road, State Route 83, Root Road, Mills Creek Lane, and West Point Drive. We anticipate that work starting next month with the awarded contractor, Skadeller Construction. The Louis Anne Caroline and Monica reservicing project, which also includes some catch basin adjustments, curbing, and inclusion of some ADA ramps, was awarded to Barbicis Construction and is expected to start in the coming weeks. The 2025 Traffic Paint Striping Ordinance 2025-102 is before you tonight in the second readings, and I would like to ask for the passage by emergency as the bid package is nearly complete and engineering would like to bid this during the summer months. The Quarterly Board of Drainage and Flood Control meets tomorrow in these chambers at 7:00 p.m. The agenda does include some additional details for some of our stormwater capital projects, including the Mills Creek Flood Control Basin and the State Route 83 culvert replacement over the Felon Ditch. Ray Ford will be updating us on the Public Works Ditch Maintenance Program, and Joe Wrights, one of the engineering project engineers, will also be apprising us on some of the proposed stormwater ordinance changes we are currently working on. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. In advance of this meeting, I provided city council a memorandum detailing the appropriation amendment before you tonight. This budget amendment includes items such as income tax sharing to North Ridgeville City Schools, electrical work at Fire Station 2, compensatory time cashouts, additional overtime, and permit software for building and engineering. We also have a resolution before council tonight for the execution of then-and-now certificates. This is for the annual license and support renewal of the IMGIS software. Council approved this expense during the annual budget process. This invoice is due and in need of your approval. I'd like to ask council to consider adopting both pieces of legislation tonight with the emergency clause to allow the Department of Finance the resources necessary to meet our financial obligations. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Also note that council has received the June 2025 Water Distribution and EPA Report, the June 2025 Police Department Report, and the June 2025 Parks and Recreation Division That brings us to recess on our agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Awig?
I move to dispense with recess.
Second.
It was moved by Awig and seconded by Swank to dispense with recess this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Okay, recess has been dispensed.
Through the chair, I would like to ask a question.
Mr. Schaefer?
Several of my constituents have received letters because they did not get the water meter installed yet. This letter has absolutely no name or signature on it. This letter has absolutely no name or signature on it. I find that kind of tacky, and I was wondering if there anything we can do to have somebody attach a name to that letter.
Sir, I don't know anything about the letter. I don't know if the city engineer has any knowledge of that.
Through the chair, I have not seen the letter.
Mr. President, I saw the letter quite some time ago. I don't remember it now. This project has been going on for quite some time, but we could take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Under first readings this evening, we have up first Ordinance 2025-108.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-139 of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-108. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that way we may pay our invoices and expenses in a timely manner.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-108 in order to pay our financial obligations in a timely manner. On the emergency clause, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-108 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes, and 2025-108 has been adopted.
2025-109?
A resolution authorizing the execution of then and now certificates by the city fiscal officer and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second, third reading?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries, seconded by Awig, to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-109. Is there any discussion?
Through the chair.
Mr. Schaefer?
Just for the general engrandissement of everybody involved in terms of facilitating transparency, could we have someone explain what a then and now certificate is?
Sure. Director of Finance, would you mind?
Through the chair. Then and now is really procedural in nature. What that means is that the invoice was received prior to the purchase order being approved. Not that the budget wasn't available, not that council didn't already pre-approve the funding, just that the invoice was received prior to the approval of the purchase order.
Thank you, Director of Finance, and as was stated earlier, this is for software that was approved during appropriations last November.
Correct.
Any additional discussion? So again, it was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-109. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can pay our bills in a timely manner.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-109 in order to pay our financial obligations in a timely manner. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-109 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-109 has been adopted.
2025-110?
An ordinance amending Sections 1268.02, 1270.02, 1272.04 of the North Ridgeville zoning code to update use regulations for automobile service stations and gasoline stations.
2025-110 is being referred to the Planning Commission and also to the Building and Lands Committee for review and discussion. 2025-111?
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in Waterbury subdivision number nine and dedicating them for public purposes.
2025-112?
A resolution of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250 OH.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-112. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, we've been presented with the opportunity to help celebrate our great nation, and as you know, next year is the semi-quintennial, which is a big word, 250 years, and we are looking to join that group that is organizing events across our state. They are having a meeting, a virtual meeting upcoming, and we'd like to join that organization in time to take part in that meeting. So I'll ask for the emergency on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any additional discussion, any questions?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Swink?
Have you decided who the delegates are going to be for this, Mr. Mayor?
I believe that we have already talked to the Historical Society and the North Ridgeville City Schools, and we have one of our internal people leading that effort as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any additional questions or comments? Again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-112. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can join that meeting, the upcoming meeting.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2025-112 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor say yes.
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 All opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to adopt 2025-112 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-112 has been adopted.
2025-113?
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Sections 8, 78.01, 03, 04, and 06 of the codified ordinances of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, in order to provide for the levy of an additional 75 one-hundredths percent or 0.75% income tax beginning January 1st, 2026.
2025-114?
An ordinance amending Sections 8, 78.01, 03, 04, and 06 of the codified ordinances of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, to provide for the levy of an additional 75 one-hundredths percent or 0.75% income tax beginning January 1st, 2026, and to provide for credit up to 1% for income paid to other municipalities.
That'll bring us to second readings, and we have one on the agenda, and that is 2025-102.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the 2025 Traffic Paint Striping and Other Appurtenances not to exceed $170,000.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Swink?
Move to dispense with the third reading?
I will second that. It was moved by Swink and seconded by Jacobs to dispense with the third reading for 2025-102. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President, per the discussion from the engineer, they want to move this along so they can get it done throughout the summertime?
Thank you. And just to add to that, this is an annual project that goes out to bid every year, and this is something that was discussed during appropriations and was approved, so, you know, obviously it will enhance the safety for the motoring and pedestrian public as well. So are there any additional comments or questions? Again, it was moved by Swink and seconded by Jacobs to dispense with the second, excuse me, with the third reading for 2025-102. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, I move to add the emergency for the reasons stated earlier by the engineer.
Second.
It was moved by Swink and seconded by DeVries to add the emergency clause to 2025-102 for the reasons stated earlier by the city engineer. On the emergency clause, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by Swink and seconded by DeVries to adopt 2025-102 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-102 has been adopted.
Under third readings, we have up first 2025-88.
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in the Meadow Lake subdivision number 14 and dedicating them for public purposes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swink and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-88. Are there any comments or questions at this time? I would just, as the city engineer mentioned, I think it was a couple meetings ago, this ordinance, along with the few that follow here, basically indicate that the developer in these different subdivisions have, after three years, the city's determined that they have completed their three-year bond requirements, and so this is just essentially accepting the streets for the city to now maintain.
Next.
Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-88 has been adopted.
2025-89?
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in Millridge subdivision number one and dedicating them for public purposes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swink, seconded by Awig, to adopt 2025-89. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-89 has been adopted.
2025-90?
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in the North Ridge Point subdivision number two and dedicating them for public purposes.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Swink, seconded by Awig, to adopt 2025-90. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-90 has been adopted.
2025-91?
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in the reserves at Winfield Farm subdivision number one and dedicating them for public purposes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abins?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It was moved by Abins and seconded by Schaefer to adopt 2025-91. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abins?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-91 has been adopted.
2025-92?
An ordinance accepting certain streets improvements located in the reserves at Winfield Farm subdivision number three and dedicating them for public purposes.
Mr. President?